You ready? I'd like to welcome everybody to the September 24th, 2020, public hearing. Thank you for keeping me straight. Commissioner Kitchens, you want to get started on?
I will. No, not at all. Yeah, well, bow your heads, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the beautiful days and the beautiful weather you've given us to know. You know when we need the rain, you know it more than anybody, and we sure appreciate it. We thank you for being with us here today. We ask that you just watch over us, guide our thoughts, guide our hearts, Lord, just make sure that we do things that are pleasing in your sight. Lord, we thank you for all the first responders, the military, sheriffs, police, all of them that protect us on a daily basis. Continue to watch over them through these trying times. Lord, just bless our meeting tonight, that we'll do things that honor you. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Kitchens.
Yes, sir.
Well, we've got this for our broadband, something that's been on the county books for quite some time. I think, Jason, you, 2017 is when this started?
Yeah.
And something we definitely need, it's just how do we get it? Mr. Pitts, if you want to start us off, this was your professional broadband.
Yes, sir. Hey, thanks so much, Mr. Chairman. So what it is, no further, thank you, everybody, for coming, and this is a public hearing. I put out some information about broadband and some initiatives that we're putting in place, like when the board passed the Connectivity Enhancement Pilot Program. When the schools were closed and their kids in various areas throughout the county, they would have to come to McDonald's, Dairy Queen, to try to have internet access. So by us putting it at our fire stations, that'll alleviate them from having to come to town to get internet service. So that was one step in enhancing the connectivity here in Jones County. What I understand is the work order has been submitted. We should begin things in soon, hopefully within 30 days, that'll be in place. And at one of our previous board meetings, the board agreed to pursue the broadband-ready designation. So that's just another step to show that Jones County is going to be broadband-ready when that time comes. And then, serving as the chairman of the ACCG Economic Development and Transportation Committee, part of our legislative agendas is going to be asking the General Assembly to appropriate funds for broadband, and so that we can also have funds to partner with agencies for the unserved and the underserved areas throughout the state of Georgia. And from that, I had people mention suggestions, ideas, recommendations. So I feel like all of them are good, but I feel like they need to be documented. So that's why I wanted to host this public hearing, so that people can document, share with the board their ideas, their suggestions, their recommendations, so that we could put some steps in place to try to improve the connectivity here in Jones County. And with that, please understand, this is a marathon and not a sprint. This is nothing that's going to happen overnight. This is going to take time. It's going to take years to accomplish. But, and what is it, the journey of a thousand miles is started with the first step. So you have to take steps to make this happen. So with that, I reached out to our legislators. I've actually sent Senator Kelly Lottler, she asked to send a letter, and I'd like to read that letter, Chairman. I also got a letter from Congressman Doug Collins, submitted a letter, and I also reached out to Greg. He's the regional representative with Senator David Perdue, and he was able to put me in contact with somebody with the USDA Rural Development Agency. And based on some of the information that's shared this evening, hopefully our next meeting will have somebody from the USDA Rural Development come in and present to us. We're going to share the information with them, and then they can come back and present on some options that are out there for us, and hopefully some possibilities for us to take the necessary steps to get prepared for broadband when it's time and the funds are there to implement here in Jones County. So the statement that we got from Senator Kelly Lottler reads that, "Our right to applaud the Jones County Board of Commissioners for their impressive and absolutely necessary initiative to bring broadband connectivity to the Jones County community. Having grown up in rural America, I have seen firsthand how access to broadband can benefit our local schools, businesses, healthcare providers, and many others. As we close our doors amid the COVID-19 outbreak, the need has targeted thoroughly and thoroughly hatched on broadband was made abundantly clear, and I believe such efforts are on display here this evening. The Georgia Department of Community Affairs recently published the findings of the current broadband access in Georgia, and found that over 250,000 locations throughout the state were inadequately classified by the Federal Communication Commission and had access to broadband. This dramatically disconnect between local communities and the federal government simplifies one of the many obstacles in recent efforts to expand broadband to those that need it the most. I am glad to join my colleagues with the Georgia delegation to notify the FCC of the unacceptable flaws from the federal broadband mapping. Expanding broadband, both rural and otherwise, is a key priority of mine's, and I have been thrilled to support congressional and agency efforts to bring broadband to Georgia, including multimillion-dollar investments this year, along with the USDA Reconnect Program. However, we will not be able to deliver the necessary support without strong engagement from Georgia's local communities. Based on what I've seen so far, I am convinced that the efforts underway in Jones County will bring much-needed clarity, expertise, and perspective to the lawful and necessary goals of providing broadband access to local communities. I would like to once again thank you for the members of the Jones County Board of Commissioners and each other participant in today's public hearing, and engaging the community is the first and perhaps the most important step in accomplishing the difficult steps at hand. However, I am convinced that Jones County has the tools and strength to do so, and I cannot wait to offer my support and work with you to end the coming months and years." So that was nice for her to submit a letter, and then also I got a letter that I wanted to read to you from Congressman Congressman Doug Collins as well. And then we'll just open it up to public comments. Open it up real quick. And it says, "Members of the Board of Commissioners for Jones County, I'm writing to commend the Jones County Board of Commissioners for their positive steps they're taking towards improving broadband connectivity for residents of and visitors to Jones County. Access to adequate quality broadband is critical to our rural communities across Georgia, especially as we continue to navigate through the ongoing Corona pandemic that has left many to work and learn from home. I am encouraged by the steps Jones County has taken to address rural broadband in their communities and hope that others across our state will follow their lead. We must ensure that our communities have the tools necessary to sustain economic growth, and that includes high-speed internet access. I am hoping that the federal government can follow the Georgia's lead, which has been a pioneer in broadband mapping and addressing the rural connectivity. To that end, introducing the Gigabyte Opportunity, the GOAT, to incentivize firms to expand broadband infrastructure to communities that lack high-speed access. By streamlining the process of building up broadband infrastructure, the GOAT will encourage more companies to enter low-income rural and urban communities, replacing the de facto monopolies, which mainly competition. I am quite pleased to know that I have such effective partners in county government throughout the state of Georgia that will ensure Georgia rural communities have the broadband access they need and deserve. Although I thought, although I regret that I cannot be here with you this evening, I look forward to connecting with each of you whenever you need and make myself and my office available to you as we may be of service." So that was from Congressman Doug Collins. So, and then, like I said, Greg, the fellow with Senator Perdue's office, gave me the contact to someone at the US Rural Development Agency in Georgia. Her name is Ms. Joyce White. So basically, after this public hearing this evening, we'll collect this data and host another meeting in October, so she can present on her findings and any suggestions or recommendations that she may have. So with that, Mr. Chairman, with permission, I'd like to open the floor up to our guests to share any ideas, suggestions, or inputs that they have.
Absolutely. In fact, I'm going to turn the floor over to, I'm making it over to-
Commissioner Kitchens.
Commissioner Kitchens, so I can go on my next interview.
Well, thank you for being with us.
Thank y'all. Didn't want to miss one.
Thank you.
Good deal. Right on time.
Still a hundred percent.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank y'all.
Good luck with the-
Interview.
Other boys. With the other kids. Thank you, Commissioner Pitts. Be glad to open up the floor for any comments, suggestions, anything anybody might have, if you'll come up to the podium and let us know what you think. Ms. Ginger?
I would be the first one that comes in.
A trendsetter.
Ginger Bailey, Jones County Board of Education. And I just want to let someone know how pleased I am that you have taken this on.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we've had this conversation many times, many waves, many things. We know it's a long-term thing, but we have learned a lot from the situation we dealt with with COVID. And like someone referred to, we were getting desperate. We were putting hotspots all over the county so people could drive up and get the communication so that their children could continue their education. But on another note, too, we have 950 virtual learners right now in Jones County. That means 5,500 students, 950 children are still doing virtual. And one thing that we did find out, too, is that it doesn't have a thing to do, really, it has something to do with poverty, but we found that spots that didn't get internet, some of them were in very, very good locations. It's just not there. So, you know, it's for the education of our children, and we don't know, BIB County right now is total virtual.
Right.
So, and I really don't know how they're pulling it off, because I don't think they have any better service than we do in many areas.
Yes, ma'am.
Also, I wanted to say how much the Board of Education appreciates this community and the output and the demand for, the demands have been great, and they meant it.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's awesome. But it is vital that we get broadband in this county.
Yes.
And Jonathan, I don't know if you have contacted Susan Holmes?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, she's been on the committee for years, trying to get this done. She's the one that got the law that was keeping a lot of the electrical places from being able to come on and handle this. And I think more voices we get, the better one we are.
Right.
But I just appreciate y'all doing this. And when I got Jonathan's email, I said, "Yeah, I've been to a few of these meetings." And I'm singing the same song, but it's for our children.
Right.
And Tri-County is willing, but they can only go so far. And so if we could get that support, are you talking about doing federal support or state?
As much, whatever support we can get, wherever we can get it, right.
I know Governor Kemp has had, I read something, a work somewhere, that he was already addressing and looking at how they could come up with money for this. So we want to be in, we want to be in the head of the line.
Exactly, exactly. And I think that's part of us seeking that broadband-ready designation, because right now, I believe, there may be less than 10 counties throughout the state of Georgia, correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, but it's very few counties in the state of Georgia have it. So if we have it, then, in my opinion, we'll kind of move to the top of the list, that we have, you know, things in place, so it'd be seriously considered.
I'm also on a board, on a committee for the Jones School Board Association for Rural, Act Rural Task Force.
Yes, ma'am.
And this topic comes up. We have got, we have got school districts in South Georgia that have no internet. I don't know how they do it in the state test, because you can only do it on the internet now.
Yes, ma'am.
So it is really serious, and I want to come to Jones County, but I want people to realize the battle we have fought to get our children to be able to do, I mean, we gave out Chromebooks, but if you, you know, if you don't have something to connect it to, it's not going to help you.
So it's useless.
And so we don't know how long this is going to carry on, or how long that our children will have to stay in this virtual situation. I do appreciate your patience and your time. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Ms. Bailey, and we're glad to be partners with the Board of Education, because I think Mr. Gibson, it's one of his slogans, "One team, one heartbeat", and we're part of the team.
That's right.
And I feel like it's our position to do our part, to try to help out wherever we can. So hopefully, within the next, like I said, 30 days, the fire station have the broadband with the internet access there, and that'll give the kids another location to go, to seek internet connectivity. So thank you. So whoever wants to go next?
Don't be shy. We will call on you.
Okay, so John's coming.
Make sure that's on, John, so if it's recording, let's light on. Push the button on the bottom if it's not.
Good deal. All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Back in 2017, I attended a meeting in this very room, where I think Jason was very instrumental in putting together a very much the same topic, internet, the broadband initiative, bringing it to Jones County. Sam, you were at that meeting along with Chris and Tommy. I don't know if you can pull that, that'd be great to have that information, maybe pull the notes and display things for our next meeting, because internet is crucial. We all need it, whether it's working from home, our kids doing our education, it's very important. But I think after that meeting, it was, they talked about having the dark fiber come into Jones, and it was more of a regional initiative and group effort. I'm just pulling back, you know, thoughts from that, sitting back here listening. But it's going to be a regional, statewide, and national, everybody working together to make this happen for everybody, because just a couple of weeks ago, I met, just crossing with business, I met with a lady that works with the Housing Authority and City of Savannah, works with the City of Savannah, and she was talking about a billion-dollar investment project going on in the Warehouse District. She says, "We have all this development, and I was having trouble with my computer. It was slow. I have the, local phone company provides internet to my office." And she says, "Huh, I see you have the same problems we have in downtown Savannah." I says, "You have internet problems in downtown Savannah?" She says, "Yes." And I'm like, "I thought y'all would have the fastest thing, being on the main, you know, eastern seaboard, Port City?" She says, "No." She says, "It's a regional and statewide problem." I said, "We're all in this together, aren't we?" She says, "Yes." So it's a money thing. And I think, if I'm stretching it back in my head, I think in 2017, it was what, $3 million, Sam? It was some, it was an astronomical number that-
For Jones County.
For Jones County. And then the state has their part, and it's the regions got to, everybody's got to do their part and put their pieces together. But internet's very important, and maybe that information, I'm sure you have your notes, be great to look over that again and, you know, show it to the community, see what we can build from and go from there.
Thank you, John.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, you look at Greg, I got at least two people that I'm looking at. That's right, I got two people I'm looking at.
I'm just hoping some of our known partners might give us some insight, input, thoughts on it, or, you know.
I was trying to go last. For those that don't know me, I don't know who those are, but I guess I'm kind of aware too, has to know, I'm the chairman of the Development Authority. I'm Greg Mullis, by the way, chairman of the Development Authority and also senior vice president with Tri-County EMC. Our story goes back a couple of years, really. In 2019, Hospital Two was passed, which gave EMCs, there are 42 EMCs in the state, we're kind of medium-sized in the state, they range from 5,000 members, as we call our customers, to about 220,000 for a couple up around Atlanta that have benefited from Atlanta sprawl. That bill allowed us to enter the broadband business, which we did not have statutory authority to do before. We had been looking and talking with some partners before that time, but once that passed, we began kind of in earnest, trying to figure out what our role was with this business, if anything. We've explored a number of partnerships, but in February, we went out and found a contractor to do a, what's called a feasibility study. And that's a relatively expensive process of giving them your GIS data, you know, where you have power lines, where you have service. They take that data, look at known service providers in those areas, look at your number of customers, your length of line, and come up with a price tag to build that out, and basically a financial feasibility model of, can you make this work? So we've been working on that since that time, and we're, we think nearing the end of that process. We're still looking at a couple of partnerships that I'm not at liberty to kind of delve into at this time, are going this on our own. And, and just to give you an idea, there's a couple of big numbers and kind of scary numbers. One of those is 60 million. That's roughly the cost of building out 2,600 miles of power lines with fiber. To give you, to put that in context, Tri-County EMC has, like I said, 2,600 miles of line. We started building those in 1939, but cost of those on the books is a little over 100 million. So to put that in the context of 60 million is kind of staggering, that, you know, we would potentially, if we go down this path, add 60 million to a plant in two years. The two-year number's a little scary, because that's roughly the amount of time it would take to build out the backbone fiber in this, in our, all of the communities we serve, in the eight counties that we go into. So we're giving that a real look. The latest thing that we have done, we sent out a survey last, starting last Friday, and it'll, they're going out in batches over the next week, to anybody that we had an email address for, asking our customers, our members, their opinion of what, what would you like for us to do? This is your business, we're a member on cooperative. We've heard from, I haven't gotten the results, I've seen the numbers coming in, and it's very strong. I mean, we're getting a lot of input. We will have that data back within about two weeks, I hope. And we feel like we will have the information we need and be at a point where we need to make a decision in, hopefully within 90 days.
Wow.
Three months, so, you know, that's probably what I should discuss. You know, one of the things, and Commissioner Pitts and I talked about this a little bit as well, you know, there are some models out there, there are probably 75 to 100 EMCs around the country that are either serving customers now, or at the same point, we are somewhere in between. I think Monroe County is a good example of how the commissioners found some money to connect some areas where local providers couldn't. Our model shows serving fiber to where our meters are. We know, if we decide to enter this business, that if our board takes us there, it will be to serve fiber to those homes. What happens with other services and other locations in the county, I don't know. You know, we don't have an answer to that yet. It's not been built into any engineering model that we've done. But I would have to think there are some partnerships and some opportunities to get funds that could bring some, either some dark fiber or some backbone fiber, to areas where a provider could have a lower cost prospect of trying to serve some of those areas, and we would certainly be open to-
Right.
-trying to pursue those as well. The last thing I would mention is that, and I think I mentioned this to you earlier, Dina Smith is with DCA. I'll get her contact information, see if she might be available to come talk with this group as well. She has been charged with the remapping in Georgia.
Okay.
And I think y'all, as y'all are aware, the maps that are out there are largely, well, they're pretty much all from provider data.
Uh-huh.
So, you know, the incumbent providers turned in a map of, this is what we serve.
Right.
And if a, you know, one of the challenges, like you and I talked about that, with the USDA money, the reconnect funds, if a census block had a single residence that was served at 10-1, which is relatively useless.
Okay, yeah.
It's checked as being served. So, you know, from a going after those funds standpoint, it makes it really tough. So Georgia's been trying to remap itself, but those aren't really, that map's not recognized by any federal agency either. So, you know, it's a tough road to hoe, but I commend y'all for doing this.
Yeah.
If Tri-County can be a part of it, you know, that's what we're trying to figure out. But either it is us entering the business or any other way, you know, we're here to help, and we want to be a part of the solution. So like I said, I commend y'all for what you're doing, and if I can help in any way, just let me know.
Hey, thank you so much, Greg.
Sure thing.
And that's what it's all about, getting input from the community. You know, Ms. Bailey mentioned on the, for the education that's in need, John mentioned about on a regional basis, and Monroe County's doing something, they're in our region, and then different co-ops are doing different projects. So, you know, Greg's here, and so this is the discussion, this is getting the community stakeholders to the table, share their ideas, and we try to find out what sticks and what we can move forward. So thank you so much.
Is there any way that, excuse me?
Go ahead.
If I don't do it, I'll forget it.
Yes.
Is there any way we can get a map of just our county and the areas that are lacking in just Jones County? Do y'all have that information?
I can get that.
Okay, that would be helpful.
Okay.
It would be helpful in two ways, to know where those areas are.
Right.
And secondly, it would be helpful to replace these hotspots.
You know what that is?
Yeah.
Oh, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
See if we can get some long enough map, or just let trying to quickly off the chair.
Tri-County has reached out and really wants to do, but like you said, you can only do so much, and it's like, with 60 million, we're going to be poor and starving.
You're right.
So, but we appreciate all of y'all's input. But that would be helpful to have a map, that we could say, okay, this is the area we don't have.
Yes, ma'am.
If we have to go total virtual, it will definitely be A-plus.
Right.
No, no, okay. Well, the good ones are good to us, we only have nine acres of ours to sell.
That's good.
DCA has issued that new map, and it's, on the DCA website, it's fascinating, they've got a tool where you can slide a bar and see the old FCC maps that all previous funding has been based upon, and then you can see the results of the mapping project that's been going on in Georgia, and it's, and it'll show you in great detail areas that are, you know, in better shape and areas that are lacking, too. So it's really fascinating to look at.
I would love to see that. I'd love to see that, too.
Yeah, be happy to.
Just send it to my Jones County.
Okay.
Go ahead, John.
Right, more questions for Greg, like the idea of EMC, EMC across country. What percentage is EMC covering Jones County? I know you mentioned around somewhere over 2,000 or 4,000 miles of line, but that's more of a count now, maybe 40?
Yeah, that's all. Yeah, that's all. I'm trying to pull numbers out of my tired head, so I'm going to give you a-
That's what I'm actually thinking.
Roughly, roughly 4,045 hundred American consumers are in Jones County. And I think that's out of the federal population. I don't know, you know, households, I know there's 28,000 roughly.
Right, I don't know the household numbers.
10,000, so about half, I guess.
Give them a rough math.
I think I have one of my former board members, James Smith, he lives in Goodness, with him.
Good evening, y'all.
Good evening.
My name's Dr. James Smith. I'm a professor, assistant professor in the School of Computer and Cyber Sciences at Augusta University. I'm also a River North resident. I'm one of those guys who commutes way too much to get to my job. Just wanted to speak tonight about, you know, how I perceive the importance of this. I'm going to, I'm going to date myself here. I started college the year the web browser was invented. And I was at Georgia Southern at the time, and went through that process and entered the IT field back in 1998. And the big push at the time was, you had to go where the action was hot, where the careers were. And everybody told me I had to go to Atlanta. I don't like big cities, and I don't like traffic, so I didn't go. But I had a really good career in the IT, I was IT director for a corporation in Macon for about 18 years, and then moved on into academia, started teaching students back in 2009. And one of the things I tried to do is mentor my students a lot, and I tell them to imagine the kind of life they want to live, not just how they want to win at their career.
Right.
How do you want to live? Where do you want to live? And a lot of people prefer a less dense living environment. They like living in communities like Gray, like River North, like Macon, even frankly. And the great, when I started teaching, the great thing I could tell them was, well, you can live next to any major airport you want to live next to, because they'll just fly you anywhere for the jobs you want. And that was in the 90s, and we've moved forward and everything, but if anything that, you know, if there's been an upside to the pandemic, is make companies really actually rethink about how work works. And I think we, in my opinion, we're on the edge of people being able to live the lives they want in the communities they want, and still get to have the jobs that have meaning to them. But that can only be accomplished if broadband is available, the ability to do the communication is there. And there's been a lot of talk, and I'm not a fan of this kind of talk, about the fact that there's not much hope for rural areas, suburban areas- the fact that there's not much hope for rural areas, suburban areas, and I just don't buy that. People like that lifestyle. At least a certain subset of, of the population likes to live with trees around them and a little bit of land and just have that, that way of life. But going forward, if you look at some of the communities around us, you look at even like Twin Cities, Georgia, where my wife's family's from, they, they're plowing fiber down the middle of dirt roads there. And that is making work available for people. This isn't, it is about education and it is about high tech, but this is economic development at the end of the day. This is people getting to live where they want to live and do the work they want to do. And the communities that invest in it will reap the benefits from that in terms of taxes, in terms of all the economic development that comes from it, and the communities that don't, won't. And I'm, I would like to commend Cox Communication. They've, the last week or so, they've been doing a lot of re-engineering in, on the lines in River North. I didn't like seeing my front yard being dug up yesterday, but I appreciate the advantages that are going to come from it. But I would love to see the day where every resident of Jones County has at least one real broadband provider that they can go to and ideally two, so they can have some choice. And again, I, I won't take up any more of your time, but think of it in terms, this is an economic development project, pure and simple. Now, thank you for your time.
Now, then James, you mentioned what Twin Cities, they're plowing on a dirt road. I mean, are they getting different grants or any?
Honestly, I don't know. I always told my wife I would never move to Twin City, Georgia, back where she's from because they didn't have good enough broadband. And then lo and behold, one day they brought a plow down the middle of the dirt road and put a piece of fiber on it and they have better broadband than I do right now. So I had to eat, had to eat crow on that one.
If I had to guess, that's about 20 miles from our planters is actually, or about 10 miles actually.
Please don't tell her I told that story, okay?
It's recorded, right? It's too late. It's recorded. Well, listen, James, thank you so much for sharing it. Any other ideas or suggestions?
And I love this county and, and certainly willing to help out in any way y'all need it in terms of expertise or time or volunteering or anything, I'm happy to help.
And that's what makes our community great, so thank you so much, right?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So we got another James in the audience too, saying we want to let him come speak.
Yeah.
I guess it would make sense to kind of say.
That's right, it's too late. It's too late.
Hey, I'm James Chef, and I've lived in Jones County literally all of my life. You know, and I remember the day when we first got Cox Internet on, you know, the east side over there, near Rock Quarry. And, you know, we thought we were something because I could play video games and I didn't have to make my parents get off the phone. But, you know, I've worked in IT for many service providers in central Georgia. James, I know you from Infinity, my Infinity days. But I'm actually, I was running late getting here tonight because the reality is I work for a large managed service provider now, but my team is in Memphis, Tennessee. Every one of my clients is in the Memphis and Little Rock, Arkansas area. So I work nine to six now because that's their eight to five. And it was, I, I had to make a decision of could I even take that job? Because, right, am I going to have the broadband, the, the access to support it? And luckily, because I'm right next to Dame Sperry, I've got decent speed. It's just a matter of reliability from wind stream, you know, when it rains, sometimes you lose your connection. But then my kids had to, then my kids had to do virtual school. And luckily, I was not working from home at that time. So I was actually still managing the IT department for Robbins Financial Credit Union at the time. And so we were able to sort of make it work, but in a sense of my kids, if they had to do all these Zoom meetings, plus all the meetings that I do every single day and all the calls with my clients, and I use voice over IP telephone, I don't use a landline phone to contact my clients. It's crucial to me being able to do my job and provide for my family. But the, the beauty of that is, like James said, that's going to become the reality and people are going to be able to not have to move to one of Robbins and not have to move to Macon in order to be able to chase the career that they want. And, and I mean, like I said, I, I work for a company that their closest office is two hours away in Decatur and, you know, but my, my office is in Memphis, Tennessee. So I'm committed to help in any way I can to see this, you know, move forward and see something happen in Jones County. And I, I don't hate on wind stream, but they need some competition to keep them honest, to be perfectly honest with you. And that's what it's going to take is having options for people that's going to push them to improve their infrastructure. Good friend of mine is the head of the fiber division for Hard Gray, and their specialty is tertiary markets. Now, I don't know if they would ever consider coming to Gray, but when you talk about partnerships and things with Tri County or whoever, you know, I, I'd be happy to have that conversation. But like I said, any way that I can help, as James said, volunteer, do what we need to do, I think it's probably one of the most important things we're going to have to do to keep us, you know, relevant going forward and keep people coming to Jones County.
Right, right. Perfect. Thank you so much for sharing, James.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go. You got it going on, man. You got it going on.
Anybody else?
I was just curious if there was, you know, any internet companies that are, you know, invest, would invest in a community that are, you know, really wanting to see it grow even more, want to reach a contact and so forth? Is there any way to reach out to them as a, you know, a, a private company as such? That sounds kind of far out, I don't know. Maybe.
I lean on Hard Gray a little bit about, I mean, purely selfish reasons, I wanted competition in River Cor. But, I mean, they're leaning more towards commercial clients right now. I mean, they do some for like multifamily or anything, but they don't seem to have a lot of appetite to, you know, deal in residential rent large. And I'm not hating on Hard Gray with that, I like them very much, but that just doesn't seem to be where they're headed right now. The others, I don't really know as well, so.
Maybe incentive would help, I wonder what that would be like.
That's how I think it is. There's got to be something to convince them to, because it's, it's a huge, I mean, we just talked about a huge investment after pressure. It's got to be worked for a while.
I think it's exactly what you said. I think it's the competition is going to wind up being the incentive. And if there's one thing we found out, and I'll go back a little bit at history that when we were talking about, what John was talking about, we originally started looking into it selfishly for government infrastructure because we were having issues with Verizon keeping up to our, for our online program. And here, everything from payroll to talking to our other departments and other buildings. So we were relying on, on a Verizon that we were paying, you know, absorbent amounts, exorbitant amounts monthly and still didn't have what we needed. So we started looking into it and, and like I said, in 2017, there was two issues fighting against us. Number one, there were no regulatory programs that, that allowed the, the assistance from EMCs or anything like that. And we were under the old, you know, the old mob bail regime is the way I look at it. There was, everything was territorial or nobody was putting the money into it. And so when we started looking into that, we found out real quick that we think Jones County is a, a really rural county. Well, when we started looking at those maps, we were nowhere near rural as some of the other, you know, some of the other counties. And so, but just like Greg was saying, when you have, when you do a, a zone and you see one person has internet in a 20-mile radius, well, that zone all of a sudden comes colored in as having internet, which was nowhere near reality.
Nowhere near reality.
And so we, uh, we, we had an issue with that and now that the maps have changed. So I think a lot of things are starting to move is the regulatory side of it, the mapping is starting to get increased and, and there's a lot more awareness to it. You know, I think if there is one bright spot of COVID, it's shown how big of a need we had. Representative Holmes said in, in, at the Capitol two years ago, the one we used to talk about, everybody wanted water and sewer. Well, now, internet availability is just as much a necessity as water was 10 or 15 years ago in, in rural counties. So I, I think that's hugely important that we know that and recognize that. And I'm absolutely proud that this board is, is moving forward with, with that too. But in my opinion, it all boils down to money. It boils down to the fact that nobody wants to sink $60 million into an infrastructure debt to have somebody come along and serve that last mile in a neighborhood and sell it to you for $50 or $75 a month. How are they, you know, the guy that spent the 60 million, how's he going to recoup it, recoup his money if somebody else comes in and sells it to the door pretty cheap? So I think that's where we're going to have to have partners like Tri County and like, you know, their partners that come in, because it's going to have to be, I mean, I, I would hope that the, the city, county and school board would say, we're all in, whatever that means in the partnership, because we know that, that, that need is there, that, that crucial need is there and we've got to be all in. And I think this board is, is definitely all in. And I know the school board is because they, they see the need as big as anybody, but it's not.
We also, just sitting here thinking about what's being said here tonight, you know, when I, when we, when we shut down March the 13th, many of our parents had to come home and work from home. That put another burden on top of the one we already had with education. So the need is really, really there. And I see in the future more people working from home than going into an office every day. You bet that, you know.
I, I think, yeah, I think COVID.
It's just like bread was a dollar a load, uh, uh, 29 cents a load one day and a dollar a load the next. That's just the change that's coming. So I commend your, your committee for taking this up, but we don't need to let it go. We've got to work on it.
Well, I think COVID also let us know that.
It did.
There, there is an ability to work from home and there is a, a way to make that work and, and, you know, more convenient and economical too, but, but we've got to have the infrastructure there. And for us as a board, I mean, we can sit here and talk about how the residents needed and the school kids needed and parents needed to work from home. But for us also, in order to us to take some of the burden off of our taxpayers on rooftop taxes, we've got to have some, some growth along our main corridors. And every time we have someone talk about growth on Gray Highway, we need water, sewer and internet.
That's right.
And, and, you know, we're, we're, we're looking at putting water and sewer, but we got to have internet or we don't get the growth in the retail or the commercial side of it either. So that, I mean, we have to look at it that too. So that's, you know, those are, those are reasons that we.
There are many ways you have to look at it.
Yeah. Mr. James?
I thought I would leave you, and I'm sure most of y'all probably already know it. It, it's important to remember that since the late 90s, early 2000s, when broadband became largely available at residences, it's been marketed as an asymmetric product. And so you, traditionally, you get a very, very large amount of data down and a very, very small amount of data up. And frankly, until March of last year, that was, or, you know, March of this year, that was fine for most people because most of it was consumption. You're watching YouTube videos, you're watching Netflix, you're, you're, you're bringing traffic in. But the upside of it, the, the upstream of it has become the most important part during these times. For example, in my household, I'm teaching from home most days of the week on video conferencing. My wife homeschools my children, interact with their friends via video chatting, and every bit of that's taking part of the upstream part of it, which, I mean, from, from, I'm just going to pick on Cox because they're my provider. And we're getting 150 megabits down and I appreciate every bit of it, but we're only getting 10 up right now. The, the point I would bring out is, and I think you made the point about the mapping, an area in Georgia's Canada's having broadband, if it's 10 down and one up, one doesn't get it done.
That's right. Doesn't get it done.
A 10 doesn't get it done, but it sure doesn't get it done. So it's important to keep in mind that those definitions are different.
That would be like 1.5 if I'm asking, like literally, no joke.
Thankfully, most of the projects that I've looked at, we've, we've been talking with our EMC brothers and sisters, whatever, around the country, and there's, there's more of that. We've had a number of Zoom meetings with, with their boards, but also some of their network engineers, trying to learn what we don't know and it's a lot. But most of them are set up as symmetrical, and their offerings are either 100 gig symmetrical.
That's incredible. That's wonderful.
Yeah.
Yep.
And they tell us that the diversity is there such that it really doesn't really strengthen the system to do it? Because there's so few people uploading that amount.
Yeah.
Uh, and there's so much diversity in it. But yeah, it's an exciting aspect and you're absolutely right. That's, I don't tell my group, and I'll go to bed and leave 100 photos, 300 photos uploading and lift a laptop and go to sleep.
It was good. Well, for what I want to do is thank everybody for coming out because this was just strictly informational session and from it, it's been great. It's been great. I'm going to look at having maybe somebody coming from the USDA, Greg's going to give you the information from DCA. Thanks for, John, for sharing about regionalism. And Monroe County has Commissioner Greg Tappley as their, yes, Tappley. And then George Mumm, I think he's very interested in broadband and everything in Monroe County, our potential partnership with the co-ops going forward. Then I was going to talk to Sam, well, mentioned to Sam a lot, maybe even during the work session at, at its commissioner's meeting. If anybody wanted to come before our commissioner's meeting, just share some of the ideas and suggestions that they may have missed tonight because stuff like, like happens and you can't come to every meeting. I got a few emails from a few people that have, you know, expressed their problems with internet service at their homes and how it needs to be addressed. And we will have another meeting, will be in October, possibly another Thursday around 6:00 o'clock, so it gives you a chance to go to work and come and share your ideas and input with one of those guest speakers from either DCA or the USDA. They'll speak to us about some different programs that's out there for us to pursue. And like I said before, guys, this is a marathon, not a sprint. Now, that's going to happen overnight, it'll be years, but if it's all working together, starting the conversation now, I feel like it's something we will, you know, get accomplished, get accomplished. So, so I want to thank you and turn over to Sam if he has any comments before we wrap it up.
No. I thank Commissioner Pitts for, 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 for streamlining everything and getting us going on, on the right track and opening up the meeting tonight. And I'm looking forward to keeping this momentum going and, and like Ms. Bailey said, don't, don't slow down on it because it's not, it's not going away. We need it now more than ever. So thank y'all for coming and hopefully the next meeting, Jason can have some maps. We can utilize our new, our new teleprompters here. I said teleprompters, I love, these are like big screens, right? They're not teleprompters. Did you have something you were?
Don't we already have a work session planned for the next meeting for the Biden?
Well, I guess we want it, the next one, won't we? Well, we're just, we're just planning up another, another meeting and, and y'all can visit our newly revamped website and, and look out for our newspaper because I'm sure there'll be something in the newspaper as well, because we have a, a great newspaper here that keeps us informed. Yes, we do.
Do you have the governor website?
Yeah, we have a revamped Jones County website.
I know that.
Yeah, as, as like last week, it came.
Does everybody else know it?
They will if they go to our website often. And we invite them to come to our website.
It's the same website.
Yeah, it's the same website that, that we went to, it's, it's not changed.